Welcome, everyone, to the Eugene City Council Work Session for July 13. Their first item for today is the Items and Committee Reports. And we'll start out with any committee reports that need to be made. Anything about Traveling County?
Well, actually, Traveling County, we're not having a meeting this month. It's gone dark for the summer. However, I would just encourage people to visit the website, travelingcounty.org. It's got calendars for all the events. There's events during the summer for kids, Tuesday nights, wine tasting. Excuse me, there's all different types of information on the website. I encourage anybody that's planning on visiting or having people come in to visit to visit that website.
Great, thank you. How about the Human Rights Commission?
The Human Rights Commission is on break. However, I do have a report. A lot of things have been going on. And the manager has, as you probably all know, has instigated and is moving very quickly through a listening project, which is more or less redefining the future of the Human Rights Commission in Eugene. Pretty exciting future, and I'd like to commend once again the manager on undergoing the project. It's been extensive. The listening circles are all complete at this point in time, and information's being processed. And nothing really more to report on that, but there will be an annual report coming sometime possibly before the break on the human rights activity for the last year. So you'll see that in your packet. If it's not before the break, it'll be in one of the smaller packages, I think, during the break. So you can look forward to that. We have new commissioners on board, and one of the things that we're going through right now is development of new commissioners. One new commissioner of note that I will mention again is an old retired city staff member who has decided to, who asked and was selected to the Human Rights Commission. That's Richie Weinman, who has done more, I think, for human rights than...
All of us put together.
I think so.
He may not want you to call him "old."
He's retired, isn't that equal old?
Oh.
No, okay.
No.
It's official. Retired is not old, okay. Also significantly, Ken Newbeck, one of our members, recently attended the World Human Rights Forum in Guangzhou and has a full report on that, which I'll forward to everybody. Won't go into too much detail, but he was a panel presenter, had a chance to talk about Mayor Piercy and some of the programs that she is very interested in, and also talked about some of the challenges that we face as a human rights city in Eugene, and also how we're beating some of the challenges. So you'll get a full report on that. It's, I think it's a six or seven-page report that I'll forward to you. So, Human Rights Commission is active. I enjoy being on the commission. We had a recent resignation, but we're filling in very well on the back. We also, I'll note that Holly Le Maissure, our longtime human rights staffer, is now a staffer in Colorado Springs, I believe it is.
They get to butcher her name.
Did I butcher that? I think I'll close.
Holly's not hard to say.
I do miss her four or five emails a day, but she's assured me that she'll catch up at some point. But in the meantime, I would like to once again publicly commend Raquel Wells, who has been a personal mentor to me as far as the way the commission works. And she does a superb job with volunteers, with the staff, with the people who need service. I just really want to say, I couldn't say enough about the work that Raquel does. So thank you for everything in that regard, John. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The Human Services Commission, I haven't had a meeting of that, so I'm going to move on past that. Alan, are you ready to do the MPC?
Yeah, and when I'm done, I'll ask you to talk about Lain Act and the rail part. The MPC started, kicked off this last quarter or last half-year, the planning season, as I call it, where all of the, we got a presentation last meeting for our transportation plan, TransPlan, TSP, for the local one. And of course, the local ones get, the technical term again, smushed into the RTP, which is the Regional Transportation Plan. And so the Regional Transportation Plan thus becomes the compilation of all of the local transportation plans. And so we have one, Lain County has one, Springfield has one, LTD has one, I call it a transplan, it's a different title, and Coburg, which is also in our MPO. All five of those have local transportation plans that they'll be working on, which will be smushed into the RTP, which will be done, I think, by the end of 2011 in part, for most part, at the MPC. As well, there, when I first got on the MPC, it was hell trying to memorize and figure out all the acronyms. So they have STIP-U, MTIP, STIP, and all these different RTP, TSP, and God, you just go nuts with it. So I'll try to make it a little more simple. There's three funding programs that the MPC deals with and the Lain Act deals with now. The state STIP-U funds is money that comes through the gas tax. Again, Mayor talked about that the other day, where all the money in that fund is just trunk, a trunk, a trunk because of, it's mostly related to gas tax, and those monies have gone down as, over the years with efficiencies and people driving less. We had $3.6 million worth of applications and $1.5 million available for funding. The projects that were in there from Eugene were for the North Bank Trail Bike Trail and then the other ones were for the, in Coburg, there's a loop path that they're doing for 400,000, oh, the North Bank Trail, $670,000. Lain County had 30th Avenue and Maxwell Road. We had Point-to-Point had a bike program for $90,000, and Springfield Franklin had a $400,000. All these are payment preservation or development of bike paths and loops. So that's not a very big list of projects. $1.5 million is the pittance compared to what we need. The next one is MTIP, which is another program. And the big one in that, and we're actually having a MPC meeting tomorrow, and the big one in that is there's a Lamont-Middle Fork River Path, which is connecting one big section of it, that's one of the last sections to be completed, from Doris Ranch back up the river to Clearwater Park, including a bridge that goes over a tributary. And so that's going to make a big connection through that whole area to be able to walk and bike that whole area there, and it's going to be exciting. That's a $320,000 project. So on the STIP, which is the Surface Transportation Program, oh, I'm sorry, STIP's stand for, I always get these things wrong.
State Transportation.
State Transportation.
Improvement.
Yeah, Improvement Plan. The draft of that is out, and there's an open house today, as a matter of fact, from 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock at the ODOT offices, which are on A Street in Springfield, next to City Hall. It used to be an old bank that they took over. And it's from 4:00 to 5:00 in the ODOT offices. There, and it's an open house talking about the different project. There's 64 projects that are on that list, for millions of dollars. In Eugene, we have several that are of note, worthy of note. We have a Safe Routes to School program, which is a, help kids get to school safely. And then we have Bertelson Road from 18th to Bailey Hill Road, that's $963,000 for payment preservation. And Coburg Road, also $800,000 for that. But the total of it, I don't exactly know the total of it, it's in the millions of dollars for the overall STIP funding. And then we also are finalizing our Title VI Plan. Title VI, a federal requirement that we have to look at the, that we're protecting citizens and having a transportation system that doesn't discriminate against protected classes of people. And that plan is in the review stage. Our Citizen Advisory Committee, which does yeoman's work and does a very good job, reviewed that, and they'll be coming shortly back for approval to MPC. And then the last one I've got on mine, then I'll kick it off to the mayor for the Lain Act and rail, is the greenhouse gas scenario planning. If you recall, Senate Bill 2001 required that Lain MPC actually do scenario planning to reduce greenhouse gases, along with Metro in Portland. Metro is required to implement one of those, or just required to do the planning. And as part of that, and then we did House Bill 1059, which was on the task force appointed by the governor, and that created a system, or a path planned to move forward, part of which was to create a toolkit for local governments like our MPO to figure out how they would meet these goals through scenario planning. And then also, kicked it off to LCDC to figure out what the goal should be per MPO. Ours is very similar to everybody else's, but for Central Lain MPO, it's a 20% reduction by 2035 in greenhouse gases. The vast majority of that will come from actions that will be taken on the, what I call the technology side. There's the technology side and the policy side. Technology, things like more efficient cars and trucks, especially trucks, and also a lot of different technology around low-carbon fuels and electric vehicles and things like that. So a lot of it gets, most of it gets taken care of, gets reduced by this technology improvements. But there are local policies that will be required to be taken or suggested through this plan in, at the local level. And that's where the toolkit comes in. All of the six MPOs are going to have a different plan, and the toolkit's going to help us inform ourselves about what we can do locally to do that. And so again, that's a 20% reduction by 2035, but only a small part of that comes from policies around transportation and land use and other things that we can do locally. And so that will be playing out over the next year, so I'll keep updating on that.
Great, nice, good report.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
You've mentioned all the local MPOs. Is that the requirement that local areas have MPOs, or is that the decision that people do?
Every major metropolitan area has a designated metropolitan planning organization if they're large enough. So there's one for, by the federal government.
Right, okay.
And so an MPO is actually a federal, we have a requirement to get federal funding, and the MPO is actually where the federal funding comes through to get to the local projects. And so we have one, Portland has one, Salem-Kaiser has one, Medford has one, Bend has one, and Corvallis has one.
Good, thanks, I understand.
Yeah, and all of them actually, until recently, all had area, had acts except for Lain. And we were the last ones to get one, and now we have one, and the mayor is the coach chair.
I would just add that all the MPOs that he just mentioned meet together, and they form an organization called the UMPAC, and that's the Oregon MPOs. And so I serve as the chair of the UMPAC, the chair is all the different, and the discussion between all the MPOs of the state, so...
Right, that's where the coordination comes in.
So it's organized and coordinated and...
Sounds great. And actually, it's great in terms of swapping of ideas. Like I said, like the scenario planning, all of them will be different, but I've already learned, and our MPOs learned from what Salem and Kaiser are doing, and Corvallis and Metro are doing in terms of the plans that they have and things that they're trying to push. So all this cross-pollination really helps a lot to get our plans in better shape. They're all customized, but...
I think from my observation, that's one of the most significant things that we do is that type of coordination that you are involved with, Alan. And I know, Mayor, you're an alternate to the MPO, is that correct?
No.
You're on the MPO, two, and then Counselor Taylor is the alternate, is that right?
Yeah.
Very good. One other question, is that you're required to use the word "smush" at every council meeting?
Yes.
Right up there, no, I won't go there.
Oh, I know what you're going to say. I'm going to say it again.
Right up there with the W E P.
All right, well, yes.
I didn't hear you say what MPO and MPC stand for in the interest of avoiding acronyms, not for us, but for people who might be listening.
Yeah, I thought, you know, I was in the electric utility business, and we had acronyms that I thought were amazing, but the transportation, Lain has...
Whole language of...
I was going to say what MPC is.
MPO is a Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is a federally created thing, and the voting members, and then there's the MPC, Metropolitan Planning, or Policy Commission, which is the voting body of that. And that consists of two voters from Eugene, Springfield, Lain County, Coburg, and LTD. And those are the only voting members. And it looks like potentially Junction City may join that.
I thought ODOT voted on that.
ODOT's, they're, they're exigent, I don't think they vote.
And that's the same delegates to both?
They do vote, yes.
Same delegates to both, but isn't that the mayor and Alan?
Yeah, they're actually smushed together, most of the time.
And speaking of smushing, there's more of that going on, because you have to have representatives from the Metropolitan Policy Committee on the ACT, which is the Area Committee on Transportation. And so the issue around that were that a lot of the other cities and entities in Lain County felt like they didn't have enough voice in the decision-making around transportation. And so the ACT is formed to give voice to the, all the other cities of Lain County, and that came to us legislatively. We've now got all the members in place, we've got all the citizen members in place, they've been trained on what they're supposed to be doing, we're getting our public participation plan in place, and so that's the process they're moving tonight, so...
With the same council delegates as the MPC and MPO?
I am the, we have one, that's me, and...
And also the coach.
And I'm also the coach here, right. And then Andrea Reiner is the MPC representative, actually.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
And there's entities, 13 different entities, all the cities, little cities, low, large groups.
And the port, port, Native Americans.
Right, and there's a whole bunch of slots for different rail and...
A bike.
Bike, and a whole bunch of different transportation, slots that have been appointed to that, which were appointed by the ACT.
And they've been getting along very well and moving right through the agenda. They haven't hit any tough stuff yet, so, but so far, so good. I think everybody's very pleased. I would say that Mayor Hooker from Craswell chairs that group and does a very, very excellent job of doing that.
And the ACT has a limited jurisdiction over just the...
The ACT gives advice to Oregon Transportation Commission.
On funding issues.
On funding issues, particularly this STIP.
The State Transportation Improvement Program.
We seem to be well represented. Thank you.
May I have some water, please?
All right, so, how about, Betty, are you ready to talk about Lain Workforce Partnership?
Sure, I don't have a lot to say about it. The main thing is that the awards lunch will be August 25th at Valley River, and the speaker will be Nancy Golden.
Great.
And it should be very interesting. I think Margaret will make reservations for you.
Did you say August 28th, 25th?
And the Workforce Partnership has reduced funding like everyone else, but they continue to work on job training, helping dislocated workers, and the National Career Readiness Certificate. I think all of this I've mentioned in meetings before. And I do want to mention again, just for the benefit of anyone who is interested in help with looking for jobs, that this one-stop shop is at Workforce Lain Center, is at 2510 Oakmont Way. And you can go in there and get help preparing a resume, or find how to get help in improving your writing skills, your mathematical skills. It's really a wonderful place to go to if you want a better job or a job, or if you're an employer who wants to help looking for workers. Thank you.
Alan, how about the Sustainability Commission?
Sure, a couple of things. That's staffed by Bebo Sullivan, who's, I think, been over a year now. She does a fantastic job of staffing that and doing the sustainability. 10% of her time is actually dedicated to the Sustainability Commission, as is almost all of our commissions. Matt McCray also helps quite a bit, and he's the guy in charge of our Climate and Energy Action Plan, and it's chaired by Josh Scove. We recently had some new folks, some of you appointed them, but we're losing longtime members, original members, Josh Bruce, who is also on the SBI, and Will Shaver is stepping down, and Teresa Brand, and they're being replaced by three new good people who have already started. And then just last week, Lisa Arkins had to step down for personal reasons, and so we'll be replacing her. I think she's a mayor appointment, I think Lisa is, isn't she?
No, it was by the entire council, I think.
Yeah.
I don't get it.
Oh, yeah, that's right. She's an at-large person. That's right. She's at-large, though. So we'll be coming back with someone for that pretty soon, I suspect. We're in the planning retreat process. We did a, two sessions. One was on June 12th, we reviewed what we already did, and then we're having one this Saturday, that was a Sunday, and this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00, we're going to be doing the second part of the retreat, which is developing a work plan for the upcoming year. And so they've been heavily engaged in envision Eugene and land use and transportation through, and also with the Planning Commission through that joint committee called CLUTAC. Yeah, Josh Scove's really proud of that acronym. They've also been engaged in the MX as to sustainability concerns around it. They are beginning to get engaged in our transportation plan, local transportation plan. We've appointed one person to that, to follow that. Car sharing and electric vehicles, they sent a report to the council about that. We asked them to do that. And then there's been a lot of outreach into the public. We just recently had a Green Lane and Sustainability Commission luncheon, which had about 50 people, was very well received. And the way we did it was, how can the Sustainability Commission engage with you, and how can you engage with Sustainability Commission to promote sustainability within the city of Eugene? But the outreach goes way beyond that. I think we've got around 30 representatives going to the Chamber of Commerce, to the school districts, the University of Oregon, to all these different entities where Sustainability Commission's members, which are 12 of them plus me, go out and attend and report back and inform those groups. On the goals that we have, again, they were that the city operations will be climate-neutral by 2020, 90% reduction in solid waste on city operations by 2035, 50% reduction in fossil fuels in the community by 2035, and develop a food security plan. And a lot of those are wrapped up into the Climate and Energy Action Plan, which we all have read and we accepted or approved that, actually. And that is the basis of a lot of the Matt and Bebs and the city staff implementation, the sustainability goals towards, that we've adopted. And that's the detailed plan on how to get there. That plan, as a professional in my professional life, I see a lot of those and talk to a lot of cities about it, and we should be extremely proud of that plan because it is one of the best ones in the country, and it's actually been heralded all over the place and used as an example of how to do it, and the actual detail of it has been used, for instance, in that, when I was talking about the MPC and the Transportation and Land Use section of it, a big chunk of that was used in helping develop the toolkit to get to those policies to help that. And so that plan has, and also has a big section on energy, which brings up my last point, which is that EWEB has just engaged in their resource plan update. They do that periodically, where they have a citizen committee that they've appointed that helps them, they educate them and helps them walk through and develop the plan for where EWEB gets its resources. And that plan has been very instrumental in directing the investments that EWEB makes, especially in the renewables and conservation area, especially wind and other hydro that's environmentally friendly. And so they're embarking on that update of that. And there's a lot of overlap between that plan and our Climate and Energy Action Plan. And I think that, and traditionally, the city hasn't been that engaged in that plan, but the fact that our Climate and Energy Action Plan actually overlaps so much and depends on the actions of EWEB, I think behooves us to keep updated on that particular process with EWEB, and for us to track that as it relates to the Climate and Energy Action Plan. And I would like to see staff and the Sustainability Commission have that on their work plan to occasionally come back to us and update the city council, what's happening with that. As well, I think we're having an EWEB city joint meeting with their board and the council coming up in, after the break, sometimes you can remember, right? And I would think that that would, we'd want to have that be a big part of the agenda and an update of what's going on with that, because they overlap so much. So I put out that request unless anyone has an objection to that. The Sustainability Commission, again, is having a retreat this Saturday, so that's kind of, that would be important to put on their agenda if we want to see that happen. So unless someone objects, I think I'll throw that out there for the Sustainability Commission to put that out on their work plan.
Sure.
Alan, that was very complete. So we're going to move from our committee reports right now.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, just one more item from HRC that I omitted. August 13th during break is Eugene Pride Day. That's going to be happening at Alton Baker Park in Eugene, August 13th. So make it note, I'm sure you'll receive a notification of that at some point. It's noon to 7:00 at Alton Baker Park.
Okay, we're going to move into just a round of any other things that you want to talk about, and since people who may be watching this, I might wonder what this thing is next to me here. I brought it because it's a gift to our city, and I thought this was a way to share that gift to our city. I'm not going to gong anybody out with this or anything.
Darn.
But this is...
Has potential.
Do it, let us hear it once.
Do I get my turn with a hammer, too?
Let us hear it once.
Oh, boy.
Anyway, this is a gift from our sister city in Shinju, Korea, and as many people know, they, they're picturing the paper this morning of Mayor Lee Chong He throwing a ball at the M's game. And last night, there was a party for them, the delegation at the Vets Club. And I want to thank the Sister City Organization for all the work they've done to host the mayor and the delegation from our sister city. And yesterday morning, we had a little ceremony in the chambers, and they, this is a small version of a very huge drum they have in their city council in Shinju. And it's a millennium drum, and it is to, every year to set off the year with good wishes for good health and prosperity and to do well. And so they brought it to wish us good health and for us to do well. And so perhaps we'll find many occasions where we need to get the millennium drum, but I just wanted everybody to share this with everybody in the community. I'm hoping that maybe for a while, we can have it in a library or somewhere where it can be shared more broadly with the community. And there's a plaque that goes with it that explains what it is. And I wanted to say a special thank you to Counselors Zelenka, Counselor Brown, and Counselor Taylor for coming yesterday morning to the ceremonial part. And I wanted to say again, thank you to Counselor Taylor and Counselor Polling, and actually, city manager and assistant city manager, and...
Andrea was there.
Andrea, Counselor Ortiz was there as well last night for the gathering, because I think it makes a lot of difference for our city presence to be at those Sister City events. It means a lot for the audience who's listening. I mean, this is a friendship that goes all the way back to 1961.
Fifty years.
Yes, 50, this is a 50-year celebration. And in the beginning, they were very poor there, and our city helped sponsor a lot of students to give them their opportunities for education. And so there is a great fondness for our city's contributions to the well-being of their community. They are doing extraordinarily well now. And so I'm sure there's a lot we can learn from them, and so friendships like that are, not only make for peace, but they really are opportunities for us to really learn from each other. And you've probably heard this before, but I think it bears, commenting on it, early on, one of the things that they learned from coming here was about our bike paths. And so they have a bike paths by their rivers that were directly, have occurred because of their visit and Sister City relationship. That's... City relationship. That's not a major thing, but actually, when you're there, it feels like home. And so I just wanted to share that with all of you. And there's an outbound, two students from our city are headed to Shinju today. And so the exchanges go on. And another, I'm going to breach this for a few minutes here. I also wanted to say that last week, we had a Korean Public Broadcasting was here to film. And what they wanted to film was that some of the, they are having some issues as they grow and expand of some conflicts between development and environmental interests. And so they look to us as people who have wrestled with those issues. And they look to us for the work that was done on the West Eugene Collaborative and Envision Eugene. And they want to take that information and share it back in Korea as how you can bring people together who have had differences and points of view and look for the common ground to move forward ahead. And they think that we have something to offer the nation of Korea in terms of learning how to wrestle with some of those very perplexing and challenging issues that you face as you try to have a strong economy and protect the natural resources that are important to your community at the same time. So I think that was a privilege to be asked and a privilege to be part of that. Mike, do you have anything you want to offer today?
Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Anybody else? George?
A couple of things. First of all, the Harlow Neighborhood Association sent out a flyer with some summer events, one on July 13, nine o'clockish in the evening at the Willackinsey Park. They're showing Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. They're also having a community picnic and National Night Out on August 3rd from 5:00 to 7:00 at Willackinsey Park. As you know, the National Night Out is when, actually, the police department gets people who go to the different neighborhoods. So the Willackinsey Park will be the area for the Harlow Neighborhood Association. And also, on Saturday, August 27th, at 9:30 a.m. at Holt Elementary, they're doing a track and playground work party, followed by a free barbecue at the North Park Community Church, which is right across the street from Holt. And I just want to thank the folks at the North Park Community Church. They've taken a real interest, a real active participation in the Harlow Neighborhood Association. And it's a real nice combination of the church and neighborhood working together to get these activities. Also, just a reminder to the public of all the road construction that's going on, particularly on Coburg Road, which they've started in the evenings for the time being. And just a big thank you to the road and transportation people. I got an email from Eric Jones yesterday. They are doing the overlay on Sandy Drive, which is about a year and a half, two-year effort by the people that lived on there to get the road fixed. And then one last thing. Next weekend, Springfield is having their annual summer festival. And I was invited to participate, well, actually, I was voluntold by my chief of staff, that as a guest chef, I'll be taking part in the broiler festival that they're trying to resurrect. So for a couple of hours, I'll be over in Springfield barbecuing chickens.
Enjoy.
I'm just trying to find a T-shirt or a bib that says, "The only good backyard chicken is on my grill," but my wife doesn't like that slogan. So we're having a little argument over that one right now.
Much to Michael's.
Thanks, George.
Maybe I went at that chicken store coop, I said.
I just wanted to point out something I have here. I don't know whether all of you got this or not, but National League of Cities book, A Planning Guide for Civic Engagement with Recent Immigrant Communities. So have you seen that? It has plans for a series of meetings to integrate the immigrants and to help them get involved in government also. And it's something that I think we might want to do. I have this, if any of you want to see it.
That might be something that would be good for you to have to share with our Human Rights Commission.
Yeah, but, okay, but...
I think they're trying to take a wheel now.
But I think it's something, I've been asking for many years now if we could have a citizens' school. And this is especially for immigrants, but I think we could do both.
I'm an immigrant.
You're an immigrant, take it. Don't lose it, though. That's some good ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Only other thing I would add is this morning, I had the opportunity to speak to the Humphrey Fellows at the University of Oregon. And Humphrey Fellows, just kind of been international a week, a couple of weeks for me, I guess, because these are folks who come from all over the world to the University of Oregon, before they just, to sort of bone up on their English before they first do their studies at various universities in the United States. And so I just wanted to convey to you on their part that they've been here, they love being in Eugene. And I think this is a great entry point for them. And they wanted to express their appreciation for the welcome they felt here and what a good experience it's been for all of them. So, city manager, anything you want to add?
Just a couple of quick items. One, I had a chance to meet the new 4J superintendent yesterday and sat down with him for quite a while. And I think he's going to be a great, I'm real impressed with him. So welcome him to the neighborhood. Speaking of neighborhoods, we had a 20-minute neighborhood open house earlier this week that I believe went really well. Part of what I just want to remind folks about is with Envision Eugene, part of it is the land supply. But you might remember, there's several strategies that are a part of it that we're continuing to move forward. And 20-minute neighborhoods is one of those. We'll be talking about MuPTs later on this month. That's another example. But so there's several Envision Eugene initiatives that we're continuing to move forward. Summer in the City tonight, and every Wednesday through the summer, so would encourage all of us to be a part of that. At 6:00 tonight, it's light opera. And it should be a great time. And I just want to extend a special thanks to Steve Offarath, who is in our wellness coordinator. One of the things he's been coordinating is a city manager's activity challenge, which is going on this month. And essentially, what it is, is we're encouraging all of our employees and providing opportunities for physical fitness as well as opportunities for service, and then additional information around just general wellness and financial wellness and some of those kinds of things. So Steve's doing a great job with that, so.
Thank you.
Oh, I was just going to mention the concert in the park, the Eugene Symphony's doing a free concert with the Parks and Rec Department this Saturday at Cuthbert. But I think you had to get tickets and they're all, they were gone like an hour. So, but it is a very, very cool event. I'll be going on Saturday.
I was going to mention with the 20-minute neighborhood, you're going to get a presentation soon on it. But you're going to find it very interesting because the kind of mapping they did, the kind of information, what shows up in a whole number of areas and various parts of the community will be very informative to the process. I think you're going to find it really fascinating. And I think the people who've been over there and looking at are finding it very, very fascinating. It tells us a lot of things about our community. Some things that you think you know, but maybe as you delve in, you didn't know as much as you thought you knew. So it's, I think it's going to be very helpful to us. And I did say this yesterday, sent out an email, but I want to say it, I want to invite the public to use the Eugene City website. I just think it's functioning so much better. I appreciate it a lot. I appreciate the work that's been done on it. I think the dashboard is working, is great. And I think it makes it very, for people in the community who really want to know what council goals are, what we're working on and how we're doing on them, it's just so easy. You just touch it and you're there. That sort of sunshine cloud rain kind of thing is really easy for people to understand. It's easy for people to understand what we're aiming for and how far we think we're getting there and how much more work we have to do. So I just want to express my, I'm sure all of us, our appreciation, because I think having a website that, and I know there's more improvements coming, but I just want to say that I think that having a website that is ever more inviting and easy for just everyday folks to use is a really big leap forward for us and something that troubled me for a long time. So I'm really, really thankful and appreciate if everybody's been involved in it. Yes?
Just a little bit more detail on the 20-minute neighborhood mapping. Sustainability Commission had a really, really preliminary look at it as they're trying to figure out how to present this thing. And it's, what it does is it takes the entire city and it says, okay, these are the eight things that we're going to look at for 20-minute neighborhoods, like proximity to transit, proximity to shopping, to all these different things, parks. And so all the things within the 20-minute neighborhood concept. And it starts layering those on top of the city of Eugene map and layers them and layers them and layers them. And you get to where you get gradients of what parts of the city have...
The most...
Have access to those things that we're considering in 20-minute neighborhoods and what areas are completely devoid of it and that we need to work on. So it's going to be a really interesting and valuable tool, especially as we go into Envision Eugene, about what this all means. And it's so graphical that it makes you notice parts of the city that have those facilities to do a 20-minute neighborhood and those that don't.
Some places where you didn't think they do, but you didn't think they did.
Yeah, there's actually several surprising spots.
Yes, yes. Mike?
One other thing, too, I just wanted to point out along with the Summer in the City program is that August 3rd, Wednesday, is the official Susan B. Coleman Dodgeball Tournament. And I'm still holding out an invitation for any of you that would like to join me on a dodgeball team to join on that Wednesday. Thank you.
I don't know, Mike.
Come on in, Mayor. Water's fine.
Seems like every Wednesday's a little bit of dodgeball.
Mike, you already have a big enough target on you.
Yeah, I know, brother. Just can't help it.
Okay, there we go.
And she's involved.
Just one more little teeny thing. And that is, in that discussion, 20-minute neighborhood, one of the things that was sort of an add-on is about health and obesity. And you will find that piece really interesting and what things all sort of align together. And then the question that we will all be faced is, do you go first to the things that have almost everything and try to complete a 20-minute neighborhood? Or do you turn your head to the folks, to the places that don't have much of it at all and begin to grow that? Or do you do some combination in between? So that's going to be a really interesting thing for, and I really think it's worth struggling about, because I think the low-hanging fruit is where we usually go. But you could, for us, we could go after the low-hanging fruit and end up never getting to the place where there's no fruit at all. So I mean, so I think that's, as that comes to you, I think that'll be an interesting thing for everybody to be thinking about. And we'll inform everything we do. So with that, I think we're ready to move into the next part of our agenda. And I'm going to move my millennium drum here. And we're going to go into the work session on Trudy Kaufman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll turn it over to Craig Smith to get us started.
Hey, I'm Craig. And this is Mike Pennwell from Facilities. We're here to have an information session only concerning the condition and status of the Kaufman Building. And council members will be given the opportunity to ask questions and give your input about the future of the property through this brief presentation. But speaking of immigration, if you, Trudy Kaufman and her husband were Jewish immigrants from Germany prior to World War II breaking out. And came to Eugene and started a business in 1937 until, and she was quite a prominent member of the community and a businesswoman, up until she passed away, I believe, in 1977. So historically, 1972, after she sold her business... What's that? She had department stores, I believe? Kaufman. Kaufman.
Mm-hmm. Lee Kaufman.
So she decided to donate her home to the city of Eugene in 1972 for the purpose of serving senior citizens in a community center-type environment. And the Recreation Division did that as one of their senior center programs up until 1997, when, under some budget restraints, we decided to create partnerships and contracts with other senior providers in the area, including Lang Community College, Emerald Empire Council on Aging, and finally Cascade Health Solutions. And it was about a year ago that we agreed to allow Cascade Health Solutions to go under a two-year contract with us to provide services in that building. And unfortunately, they decided to move locations and provide their service elsewhere, and so left the building in December of last year. So since January of this year, the building has been in mothball status. Financial considerations for the building is that prior to its being in mothball status, we dedicated $30,000 to $35,000 a year in building maintenance and major improvements. Currently, it's costing us about $20,000 per year to maintain it in such status. And we do have a Trudy Kaufman fund, trust fund, that essentially is paying for that right now. That fund was established when we sold an annex of the property. And through other donations, that fund was created to provide senior services. And so that's the fund we're currently using to pay the mothball status. And we feel that that fund, we have enough money in that fund until approximately FY15 or FY16, before that runs out. I'd like to turn it over to Mike for a little report on building condition.
Sure. Well, the house was built in 1908, and it's in pretty good shape for an over 100-year-old house. But it is a little tired and needs a few things. All of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems need some renewal. And there's probably some structural issues here and there, nothing major, but a few minor things. We did put a new roof on it a couple of years ago to protect it. But if somebody wanted to, you know, kind of bring it up to snuff, it'd be $150,000 to $200,000 probably to be used in its existing configuration. And for an institutional use of some kind, it'd probably be substantially more than that as well. The zoning classification, in 2004, the council established the Historic Kaufman House Special Area Zone, which was, the main purpose was to protect the house and the historic gardens that were designed by Lloyd Bond, to protect that for, you know, future amenity for the city and to, there's a lot of input at that time from the Neighborhood Association, too. So that, it's a rather large site, so it didn't get divided up into, you know, housing units and student housing or whatever. But was, continued to work into the neighborhood feel and protect the historic value of the property. There's no language that forbids the city from selling the property, but all of the special use, special historic district requirements would survive a sale and still be subject. So for example, somebody couldn't just bulldoze it and build, you know, 50 apartments or something like that. So the intent there is to preserve the house and the gardens in essentially their present form. And the further someone wanted to deviate from that, the more difficult the processes would be through planning and zoning and so on.
Okay. So essentially, future use of the building. At this time, the Recreation Division doesn't see any current or future possibilities for its use with us as a senior community center. We operate most of our senior services out of Campbell and Peterson Barn Senior Center. And we're not finding that the building would really serve us any purpose in that realm. So our intention is to get input from other city departments, also get input from the Jefferson West Night Neighborhood on the potential future of the building, which could include the potential disposal of the property, and see where we go from there to see what's the right thing to do with the building. Okay. So questions or...
What's the, what would be the overall appraisal value of that building?
We did have a residential appraisal report done internally, and it was roughly around $500,000.
So when Mr. Kaufman donated to the city, was there, it says here it was to benefit senior citizens. Is that part of the... senior citizens, is that part of the title and transference of it, that it has those kind of restrictions on it?
No, there's no binding language that says the property needs to be continued to use for that purpose.
One of the, to use a metaphor from Captain Metaphor, who's not here today, Councilor Pryor, that, you know, we have this, the pig and the python metaphor of this bulge of people moving through the snake is about to become senior citizens in our, the baby boomers. And while today we might not have use of it, I think that senior services is going to become a bigger and more prevalent and more desired and more requested service in all of its forms in the next 20 years. I really don't like the idea of us selling the property and getting rid of it, disposing of it, as you said. I think keeping it is a good idea, although we're spending about $20,000 to $30,000 a year to keep, for upkeep, and it's projected debt fund, Kaufman Fund, is going to be depleted by 2015
Mm-hmm.
At the current rates of spending, so then it falls on to becoming a general fund burden. But I think this is one of our legacy things that I would be happy to see get rolled into and kept as an asset, because I think we're going to use it.
Actual, yeah, the actual, the building itself is, it's three stories, it's two stories and a basement, and it's, it's, it's been used as a senior service, but it's not one floor. You think about accessibility with limited mobility and things like that, and it's a very awkward kind of building to serve that population in, and we are preparing for expanded services as much as we can.
Seventy, seventy-five, you know.
Right.
I've got Betty and Pat and George polling in the queue. I'd just like to say, in thinking about this, there is the value, the historic value of the building and the gardens, there's the neighborhood interest in what survives in their neighborhood, there is the interest in maintaining good housing stock in the urban core, and there's the interest that we have in affordable housing, so there may be something that can be, you know, public-private partnership or some other thing, that can address a number of those issues that are goals of our community in a way that is reasonable and economically feasible for us as a city, and I don't think we've even kind of, we're on the front edge of exploring that, but I do think we have an interest in preserving the quality of our urban neighborhoods while we're trying to go after meeting these other goals, and if this is an opportunity to explore or try some things, then we ought to be creative and do some out-of-the-box thinking about that in a way that might even possibly make some money for us or something. So just to, just to put that out there as a thought, and I'm not dismissing any of the things that people have said before, I'm just saying there may be multiple goals that can be met that will help us move along things, and maybe you need one of these, I'm sure you're going to do it anyway, but I was just going to suggest, early on, sort of applying that triple bottom line analysis to it to help push the edges of thinking about it at the, at the front end might be, might be helpful. Okay, you're next.
Thank you. First, I just want to say that old people can climb stairs.
[laughing]
And then, I have a question, is Trudy Kaufman's niece still around? She used to come to council meetings frequent, every so often.
Trudy Kaufman's niece?
Trudy Kaufman's niece.
I don't know.
She came, she was very upset that we weren't saving it, that we were thinking about not saving the house. She said her aunt left it with the intention that the older people in the neighborhood could use it as a gathering place, and it is, there is something about going against the wishes of people who give us things that may discourage other people from, who feel like being philanthropic, that I'm concerned about that, but I'm also concerned about the historic value of the house, and I would guess that the niece must not be around anymore, or we would have heard from her recently.
I haven't had contact.
We might now.
She might be listening right now, if she is, maybe she'll come and speak to us at our next meeting, but I do think it's important to honor the wishes as far as we can, and I don't understand how it could cost $20,000 a year to keep up a house.
Well, a good example, last week it got tagged extensively, and so we had to send people over there to clean and repaint the tagging. There are things like fire alarm systems and even the two lifts that have to be tested periodically to maintain certifications and
Lifts of?
Wheelchair lifts.
Oh.
That serve the lower level, and those, you have to keep those up, and backflow testing, and there's a variety of things like that, but especially being empty, it's beginning to become a bit of an attractive nuisance that
Okay, it isn't just ordinary upkeep you're talking about then.
Correct.
I was wondering
Generally, mowing the lawn, it's about, it's almost an acre, and it just costs money to maintain a property of that size.
Well, I was wondering if, I think, I think it might be a good neighborhood center at some point, but I was wondering if we could rent it to a family, who would then maintain it, and, and that if the rent money might pay for the maintenance, other maintenance that other than the renters would do, the renters would mow the lawn, things of that sort, and just keep it in good shape for when we may need it for something else, and the money, if there's a profit, it could go into a fund, into the fund you already have. Is that a possibility? Would it be legal to rent it out?
It would, I believe that would constitute a surplusing, and so, you know, as long as you approved, as long as City Manager recommended that and you guys approved it, that would be an allowable use.
And that would cut down on the vandalism, it would just be a home then, and it could be maintained and kept as a historic structure.
Right, and so, one of the things we would need to do is repair some of the plumbing and do a few things in it to make it rentable, so, you know, we would really want to know that that was the direction that, well, as Craig said, through the process of exploring opportunities, making sure that we can cover ourselves, make the improvements and so on, and then get that back, that that's the direction that
I think it would make a lovely home for someone.
Definitely.
And without, that way we could reserve it for the original intention if we need it for that. That would be my suggestion.
Pat?
Also, if any of the family are still around, I suggest that we at least talk to them and tell them what we're thinking about, they might like to know.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I had some opportunity over the last year to work with the group that was working with Cascade Health Solutions to operate the senior center there, and it's fortunate that they weren't able to continue their involvement there, because they were doing a great job. They were serving a relatively limited number of people, but they were doing it in a fashion that could have been expanded, and they were providing a high level of service at a low cost to the people who were, who were participating. And I'm not sure that Cascade Health Solutions is doing the same thing in another facility. So I tried to help them raise a little bit of money, but it became evident that it just simply wasn't going to work out. So I'd love to see them in there, but since they're not, you know, we have to keep our eyes to the future, and Councilor Taylor has suggested perhaps rental to a, to a low-income family or a family who may maintain it. You know, the other thing that comes to mind immediately is, it is a great facility, you know, it's not just a house, it's not just any house, it's a beautiful landscaped facility, almost an acre, parking is an issue, but, you know, we do operate some enterprise funds, and it's a little bit intriguing to me to think of the possibility of using it as a, as an attraction to the City of Eugene to perhaps bring in small conventions, small groups who may need a facility of that type, just for whether it's corporate, whether it's business, whatever it may be. You see facilities like this in different places that allow rental of the entire facility. It's perhaps a little bit of a stretch, but if we're
Well, most of those places have more than three parking places, haven't they?
And they're not on a street that has no parking spaces along it, so it's, that is a challenge, and you certainly wouldn't want to disrupt any of the existing landscaping, because really every inch of it is just beautiful, and the building itself is well-maintained. And I hear the $500,000 estimate on that, I'll write a check tomorrow if that's what you're selling it for. That's, well, I couldn't do that, but, but no, that, I think, you know, in a market situation, it's probably likely to, could fetch in the right market more than that, if we were inclined to sell it. But like other people have said here, I'd be more inclined to keep it as an asset if there's a way to make it more or less pay for itself, more or less not be a hindrance on the general fund after 2015. So I trust that it's in the good hands of people who really care about it in the city, and we'll keep an eye on it for the future. So keeping our minds open to what it may be used for, there are facilities that have weddings, for instance, you know, just lots of little things that you see around that I don't know if there's any money or any break-even point we could achieve with the city, but if that's one way to keep it into perpetuity, or into the future at least, and perhaps in the future have room for a senior center, or whatever it was originally intended for, so. Good work, keep the building, keep it up, and dug on those graffiti guys.
George polling.
What's the approximate square footage of the house?
Around 9,000, isn't it? Oh, 65.
6,500 square feet?
6,500.
6,500.
Yeah, that's quite, quite large. It has an addition on it, in addition to the original house.
Any bedrooms?
I'm not sure.
One, two, four, five, six.
Two kitchens, actually, upstairs, one on the main floor.
And I'm rest, restorer with Public Works, and I've been through it and worked with the appraiser doing the appraisal, but yeah, there is a kitchen on the main floor and a kitchen on the second floor, and then a number of bathrooms, and the addition, probably the original house was about 3,500 square feet, and then the addition that was put on in the, Mike might remember this better, I think it was in the 63, it was probably 3,000 square feet more, and so a number of rooms, bedrooms with that, with the addition.
Well, I'm glad to hear when you were talking about the future of this, getting input from staff in the neighborhood, and particularly Jefferson Westside Neighbors, because we all received an email from Paul Conti from the Jefferson Westside Neighbors, and although I don't always agree with Paul, he always comes up with some good points to ponder, and that was one of them, that evidently he was involved in some process earlier on, and kind of hasn't heard anything, so I'm, I'm glad to see that he did mention that, you know, they will be involved in any type of process, it's a good thing. And although there's no binding language as to what can be done with this property, I am glad to see that, in the event that we do have to sell the property, that it's going to be more difficult for whoever buys it to just tear it down and basically maintain the historic value of it, because I do think that's important. And I was just wondering if an organization such as, and not necessarily them, but such as St. Vincent's, would be interested in renovating the building for some low-income housing, or affordable housing, something of that nature. It'd be one way to maintain the building, the exterior of the building, the grounds, you know, you can work up an RFP to make specific languages to, you know, what you can and cannot do with the property, so it's just an idea I'm just going to toss out.
Okay.
George, George polling.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any firm opinions on, at the moment, whether the city should sell it or keep it, but I, I did think it's, I mean, it's pretty obvious, as Counselor Zalinka pointed out, there is a huge demographic here entering the pipeline of becoming senior citizens, all the World War II baby boomers, so, but I just think, you know, we ought examine all the options, and I, are you going to form a study group, a Kaufman's Study Group with the neighborhood and the other Jefferson Westside and with other community groups that would have an interest in maintaining it?
It'll primarily be me taking the lead and connecting with other city departments and options, and PDD around affordable housing, or, and then inviting folks like the Jefferson Westside Neighborhood to get together with me and hear, get their input on what they think are options for it.
Sure, but I think there's probably other groups that have some ideas about it, and I think it's important to get everybody's input like that at a neighborhood level, because it, you know, it's a beautiful building, and it's in a, but you have fully mature, one of the oldest neighborhoods, and fully mature trees all around it, fits in with the neighborhood really nicely, it's just, would just be a shame to have that disappear somehow.
Right.
So, given, given the direction you're going, it seems to me that one of the things you might want to bring into the thinking is get our Historic Review Board to be part of that conversation as well, because they actually like to be part of conversations about historic properties and feel like they're more meaningful to our community when they get to do that, and I would also say that I think, depending on what is determined the direction to go, if part of it is any restoration of the historical quality of the building at some point, there's probably some grant opportunities and things around that, too, that someone should take advantage of, so kind of getting all that in the thinking might really help, help with this. I think, you know, I like the, I like the conversation we're having, and I'm not wedded to any particular outcome either, but I really would like to, I'll reiterate that it really seems to me like this is one of those golden moments where you have a really nice, significant piece of historical property in a part of the community that we have interest in preserving with the possibility of meeting the needs of a part of the population, that we want to meet the needs of, to really look at it that kind of robust way, pretty sizable, too, so it really, it really does make sense to me that we take the time to do this the right way.
Yeah.
Alan?
Yeah, well, things I commonly hear in talking to people is that Eugene doesn't preserve its history very well, "bulldoze it," is a common phrase that's been told, and in a lot of ways I agree with that, and this is one of those examples, like the mayor was just talking about, that it does have significance, it is a nice asset, it's a great piece of property, and it's a, I think it's a beautiful house, and preserving it or making sure that whatever we end up doing with it through this look at it, that it gets preserved in its, in its state, I think it would be a shame to have that turn into a robust or something like that, it wouldn't, to me, fit within the community, or, and it would be, again, get another example where we let our history go by the wayside when we had an opportunity that we missed.
I'm wondering if it might help if I just read this one-sentence description of the purpose of the Special Historic Zone, because I think it addresses a lot of these issues. The SHK Special Area Zone, as it's called, is intended to afford the Gertrude and Ludwig Kaufman House historic landmark special treatment and protection so that the uses permitted and restrictions imposed will preserve and allow rehabilitation of the landmark's character-defining features, as an example of a prominent local architect's work, John Hunziker, and the distinctive landscape design features of Lloyd Bond. Those character-defining features are described in Exhibit A, Final Decision Eugene Historic Review Board, December 4, 2003. So this, this had the involvement of the Neighborhood Association, the Historic Review Board, and so it's completely consistent to maintain that continuity and that input as we move forward.
Does that prohibit modification of the house substantially, or even getting rid of bulldozing it?
Well, I talked with a planner this morning, and kind of the way we summarized it was that the farther you get away from the current historic house and gardens, the more hoops you have to go through, and the harder it becomes, so the, really, the intent is to preserve it in its, all its historic glory as it is, both with the house and significantly the landscaping, which usually isn't protected in a special zone like this. So recognizing both the house and the landscaping was an important feature of this, this ordinance.
Betty?
Back to my idea about renting, I'm thinking there are people with a good income who could afford to rent something expensive, who are in the city only temporarily, there are some kinds of jobs that There are some kinds of jobs that don't last forever, and that's the kind of person I think might like to rent it, wanting a beautiful place to live but maybe not wanting to buy and have to resell. I'd like to live there myself, but I don't think I qualify.
What a great bedroom. That's a permitted use.
That would work.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you very much. I think you've given us a lot to think about, and...
Thank you.
All right. With that, I will close the meeting. Thank you, everybody.